I'd like to call this town council special meeting in order this night, February the 3rd, 2020. If you would, I'd like for everybody to stand and give the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to everybody for which it stands, what a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I agree, I'd like to have an appointment for a temporary clerk, please. I'm going to hold them all in silence, so just continue on. So let's go with the appointment of the temporary clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I move the town council appointing Rick and Tina Pressley as clerk of the Front Royal Town Council, Pro Tem, for the meeting of the Front Royal Town Council on February the 3rd, 2020, special meeting and work session. And for all such additional and further meetings in times that are a continuation of the February 3rd, 2020 meeting at her services, such as clerk, Pro Tem, may be needed.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Our temporary clerk now will be officially taking minutes and all the other things that needs to be done here this evening. Fourth thing on our agenda tonight is roll calls, please.
Mayor T. Wall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Seelak.
Here.
Councilman Cockrell.
Here.
Councilman Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Holloway.
Here.
Councilman Meza.
Here.
Councilman Thompson.
Here.
Let's see, on our agenda tonight is approve or cancel the executive search committee. Due to further negotiations, we're going to have to delete this from the agenda tonight. So I would like somebody to make a motion for deletion of this particular item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that it's being moved, item five from the agenda in tonight's meeting.
So here's the... Tina could have a roll call.
Is there any discussion on that?
Oh, okay, if you want to discuss, okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that we still anticipate to be able to move forward at this time anyways, within the next, hopefully week, but within the next two weeks, probably at the latest, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Tina, could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelak.
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Thompson.
Yes.
There's no other things to come up for the meeting. I hear, so I'd like to motion to close the meeting.
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. That concludes our council meeting this evening. We're going to go into our work session. I would like to say this for everybody who's here, we're glad you're here. I want to apologize, we don't have enough chairs. We didn't really anticipate this number of people that are here this evening. But one thing for sure tonight, I want to make sure and I want to let you know upfront, that there will be no public discussion tonight on the budget. So later on, if there's any questions you want to discuss with any of the council, then that's fine, but we're not going to have here this evening on the budget, there'll be... Matt will be presenting us the budget, and then with the council, as we discuss it, then questions can be answered by the council only. So I want you, everybody, to know that, that you're this evening. But we are glad you're here, and hopefully at our next meeting, if you have something that you would like to bring forward, our meeting next Monday night will be open to the public, and you can come at that time and speak whatever you want to speak about. Is that understood?
Yes, sir.
And I also would like to ask you not to have any loud, boisterous people in here tonight as the council discusses the budget, and likely you ought to understand that as well, okay? Because I want to have a pretty cordial meeting this evening, very quiet if possible. And I appreciate you coming. Okay, at this time, the first item tonight is recommended budget review of revenue and general fund expenditures. Mr. Teeger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get started, I just wanted to thank staff, in particular, thank BJ Wilson, who I've asked to sit up here at the table. It's been countless hours, countless weekends, department heads, I'd like to thank all the department heads, most of whom are sitting on the front row. We have, the department heads presented the budget, as their proposed budget. We sat down, BJ and I sat down with their team, walked through the budget line by line. BJ and I probably spent four or five more rounds going through the budget ourselves. We called department heads back in, went through it some more, and I think the budget that we're presenting to you tonight is a budget that I have confidence in, and one that I'm asking you to consider for adoption. So there's three documents before you. There's this document, then there's the supplemental graphs document, and the actual proposed budget. I thought it'd be nice to have the graphs in an effort so you can follow along in the proposed budget. You can just flip through as we're going through the various departments, you can see the various trends. I think sometime visually seeing the trends help, and then you can go, I'll go through this, I'm not going to go through it line by line, but I'll go through it pretty much department by department. First thing I'm going to discuss tonight are the historical trends. Any comments before I get started on this?
I'm missing the supposed, I don't have that one.
Perfect, that's why. Perfect. So if you don't mind, I'm going to, since it's probably going to be a long meeting, I'm going to do this sitting down as opposed to standing up. If you can't hear me for some reason, just speak up and let me know. Historical trends, I find it helpful to try to get a perspective of various trends. I'm sure there's other trends we could have pulled, perhaps we pulled more trends than we should have, but at least you have this, give you a perspective of our town and in our operations. First item is the town population. Over the last 10 years, we've had an increase of about 605 residents, or an increase of 4% cumulative over that time period. I did show the last five years, which shows that we've lost 324 residents, or 2%. I also want to draw to your attention that these numbers, you'll see, I'd say, most of the slides, if not all, but two or three, show the years from 2009 to 2019. The reason we did that was because those were the actual numbers in the audit, in the back of the CAFERs, so these are audited numbers, and at the moment that they did the audit, that is, that's the information they pulled. So as of the date they did the audit, that's the numbers that they used, so...
Is that calendar year or July?
This is calendar year.
Calendar, okay.
Right, you'd get it if these would be calendar year. Correct. And you'll hear that after, right BJ?
Yes.
Okay, next item is the consumer price index. I just showed that, just to give you a perspective of what the average CPI is over the course of the same time period, 1.7%. Full-time employees, we've had an increase of 16 full-time employees over this time period. Again, that is the, now, for this number, this is the number of full-time employees as of the date of their audit. So you'll note down at the bottom, for FY '20, we budgeted for 177, and FY '21, I'm budgeting for 173. So put in perspective, right now, the actual, Julie, I think we have, how many openings? About 12? Yes, right now, we have 12 openings. So if they were to do the audit, you know, right now, it would show 100, what is it, 161, or 60, yeah, 162 employees. Salaries and benefits, you see a relatively modest growth over that time period, $2.2 million in salaries and benefits, or 21%. Business licenses, businesses licenses issued, we're down 25 licenses, or approximately 2% over this time period. That's not a trend I particularly like to see, but I do see that from 2018, we've had a slight increase in the number of business licenses, so I think that's, you know, you see the economy starting to pick up again.
Matt?
Yeah?
Do you want us to ask questions as we go?
Sure, please. Yeah, go ahead, that's fine.
Okay, salaries and benefits, I don't know, it's probably more of a BJ question. Do you know if the increase is predominantly related to benefits or salary growth, or is it...
It's a combination of all of the above. It's a benefit, salary, additional position, so it's a combination of all of those things.
It's not one factor?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
That was 2019, I think that was the, let's see, was that the first year of the comp study?
Eighteen, it would be an implementation...
No, you're correct, 2019, 2020. And this is the last year, so you'll see, you'll see it higher for 2020.
Yeah, and I asked that question too, because I think it was either 15, 16, somewhere in there, where we had that 11% increase in benefits. Sorry, that would make sense, the spike would correlate to that.
Yep. Okay, so we're on the B-Pole slide, if you're following along, slide seven. B-Pole revenues is strong, we have a $138,000 increase, or 22% in the actual revenues that's been collected in B-Pole tax. Zoning permits issued, we had an increase in 95 permits over 10 years, about 44%, 307 in total. Not a tremendous amount in quantity, but the increase over that time period is reasonable. You know, that's everything from fencing, you know, permits to subdivision, or housing, or whatever the case is. Some police department statistics, traffic tickets, which may please most people in the room, are down, 1,119 tickets, or 21%, and the number of actual arrests are down as well, they're down 41 arrests, or 3%. So they're relatively flat as far as the arrests goes. Number of tickets, you saw a spike again in 2017, has kind of plateaued off. New water utility connections for water, we had 13 new connections over a 10-year period, which represents a 40% increase, only 45, you know, new connections in 2019. Wastewater, we had 12 connections, or 36%, a total of 25 connections. Am I going too fast? Do you all like the pace?
Only 13 connections in 10 years?
Increase.
Increase. Increase over, okay.
2009, 2013.
Yes, we had a total, if you noticed, the number there is 45, is what we had in 19, we had 32 in '09.
Got it.
Good question. Water average daily consumption, this is probably, in my opinion, good news, we're using less water. I think the public is conserving more water, so we've had, you know, we're down 175,000 gallons, so that affects our revenues, because we're not using as much water, or we're down about 8%. Here's a slide that's troubling, which we all...
BJ, in regards to water, did water disaltate, is that problematic due to Dominion?
Some of it's due to Dominion, the main factor is, is that's actually the consumption is what the plant is making, so not necessarily to withdraw, but how much the plant is making. So the decrease that we saw in there, some of that's due to our leak detection, the survey that we were doing, which began at around 2010, 2009 or so, really got aggressive with it, and then you saw it pick back up because of Dominion, that's correct.
Okay, great.
Okay, slide 12, wastewater treatment. We've increased 1.1 million gallons, or 31%. So there's our INI, which is problematic, that's 4.4 million gallons that we had to treat in 2019, which is significant.
Do those two typically correlate, to the direction, water and sewer?
In the perfect world, you would hope.
In the perfect world, they would indeed, I mean, there's likely going to have some differentiation between what are leaks and your INI, but in the perfect world, they would
Average weekday utility payments received versus Saturday payments, I thought this was interesting. Saturday payments, we only get 30 payments on the day, and all we do is accept just a payment, and payments...
Mr. Town Manager, if you would back up a second.
Sure.
I'm a little confused. I think I understood you to say that wastewater treatment plant was increased due to water leakage?
No, no, no.
I thought we were talking about rainwater.
Yeah, INI.
I know, that's where I'm working, but INI.
Yeah, inflow. Yeah. Thank you.
I was trying to understand the correlation between...
Look, if I misspeak, all means please correct me.
That's your job.
All right. Saturday payments, we have 30, average 30 payments a day, during the weekday, we averaged 389 payments. Saturday payments have not increased since the town began opening the drive-through on Saturdays. Services provided on Saturdays is limited, only accepting payments, whereas the vast majority of payments received could be placed in the drop box located next to the drive-through Real estate values, yeah, I don't know, this, we saw a nice increase, oh, that should be 2018, we have a typo, 2018, 2019. We saw an increase in the economy in real estate values, but all in all, since 2010, the values have dropped to about $1 million. Total revenues for the town, the total revenues have increased, $11.8 million, or about 53%. 33.8 million in revenues collected in 2019. Am I going too fast? You guys good? Okay, so I have, let's see, I have two operational expense slides, I thought that was important. So the first slide shows operational expense excluding depreciation and the purchase of electricity. BJ and I thought that we included that, it would skew the numbers, so what I'm trying to do is, I'm just trying to give you a perspective of the true operational expense. We've had an increase of 6.3 million over this 10-year time period, which is 35%, and I noted that was eight times the rate of population growth.
So 30, our expenses for the town have grown by 35%, even though we have not grown by people.
Correct.
I think that's important to note.
Operational expense excluding salaries, benefits, and the purchase of electricity increased 53%. So what I did here was, I wanted to give you a perspective of operational expenses backing out salaries.
This is your next slide, it doesn't change.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It changes on the TV.
There you go. Backing out the expenses of salaries, benefits, and purchase of electricity, so that increased 4.1 million, or 53%, which is 13 times the rate of population growth. Fund balance, excluding reserves and carryover purchase orders, in 2011 to '14 is when we began liabilities associated with OPEB liabilities. In '16 to '18, includes capitalization of the wastewater treatment plant construction. In '18 to '19, the electric fund decrease and increase in electric rates were adjusted accordingly. The amounts do not include reserve amounts or reflect the amounts carried forward to future years. Again, just wanted to give you a trend. Okay, this one is probably the slide BJ and I struggled the most with. What we wanted to do, we wanted to show you, in my budget that I'm presenting to you tonight, we're showing a significant amount of investments, and much of that money is going to be borrowed. So we wanted to give you a perspective of the debt limits, and BJ, if I misspeak, please don't at all hesitate to interrupt or correct me. The top line represents the general obligation bonds in the general fund, okay? So we, as we all know, we have several accounts, we have the enterprise accounts, and we have the general fund. General fund debt is through general obligation bonds.
The top line is our general obligation debt limit, that's the limit that we have on our general obligation bond. So general obligation bonds differ from revenue bonds because they're based on your general assets. Revenue bonds is based on your revenue, because you're having incoming through your enterprise funds. So the debt limit on the top line only represents the obligation, or our limit associated with general obligation bond. If we were to take the revenue bonds into account, that limit would be higher. But the standard practice is that in our CAFER, you'll see these limits for the general obligation bonds. So that is our limit for the general obligation.
And we didn't have anything for the revenue bonds in our CAFER.
That's correct, it's a, it's a different animal in itself for the revenue bonds.
So bottom line is, is down at the bottom, in 2010, we were 130 million below, in 2019, we were 77 million below, in 2021, we were 48 million below, and that is below the general obligation limit. Again, much of that spending was in the, well, the plant for the revenue bonds.
Yes, that's correct. But the bottom line is all of our debt, including revenue bonds and general obligation bonds. We were just trying to get a good sense of a comparison for us that you could look at in the CAFER.
Am I being, I mean, clarify...
It's increasing to the ceiling, is essentially what you're saying.
No, not necessarily. It is increasing, so total debt is increasing, that's the bottom line, total debt has increased. But the top line is only the limit for general obligation bonds. But much of that increase from '15 to '21 has been an increase from the enterprise debt, which is revenue bonds. If we had the ability in our CAFER to capture the debt limit for general obligation and capture debt limit for revenue bonds, it'd probably be on the next page, it'd be up higher. Does that make sense?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, we hesitated whether to put this in, we figured it might be more confusing than it was worth, but, and we can talk about it, if you guys have questions, just please let me know. Okay, so we talked about various projects, and, you know, these are the major capital projects that we have been discussing as council. Some of these have been on our priority and goal list, and some of, in my opinion, are near, well, one of them in particular is a near critical item. The first, and I just put them in order as far as largest to smallest, the first one's redundant water line, and on the right-hand side, I'm not going to read every detail, but on the right-hand side, you'll see that this has been in process since about 2013. 2011, Dominion signed the contract, Alamoa, '22. '13, we started to do some preliminary engineering estimates. '14 contracted, 2017, CHA reliability study, and then last year, we all know that CHA came in and gave, I think, two different proposals that year, in May and in August. But if the line, if the line were to break, customers would be out of water for an extended period of time, and I'm not going to put dates on that, I was advised not to, but it would be an extended period of time if the water line broke underneath the bridge. And that's the only line we have. Contractually, as you may recall, Dominion was willing to invest 3.5 million over a course of a time period into the line itself. In addition, their rate increase for water rates are projected to pay for the line, and that was according to the CHA engineering presentation, August 24, 2019, if you wanted to go back and take a look at that.
So they're putting in three and a half, we're funding the investment of the redundant water line, and then the ROI is paid back over the time period of whatever it is, the 10 years, I can't remember now.
Yeah, that was the assessment, that was the assessment from the engineers, correct. And again, so if we choose not to invest in the redundant water line, we'd be left in a situation where a customer could be out of water, or that whole corridor could be out of water for an extended period of time, and we would lose out on 3.5 million that Dominion has contractually pledged to invest. So that's why I think council, from dating back to 2013, all the way to now, have we, council's been planning to do this. They haven't moved forward in a quicker manner, I think, because the rates, the bond rates were high, higher back in those days, as compared to the good rates that we have today.
Matt, I think it's also important to note that it's, not that the 3.5 million would be off the table, but if we were unable to provide the water, we'd be in breach of our contract with Dominion as well, if there was a water line break.
Yeah. Technically, it's my understanding from a legal perspective, and Doug, George's not here, is he? George has done a lot of that research, technically, I don't believe we would be in breach of contract, based upon George's interpretation, but we can talk about that another time. And again, if George, if the legal opinion's different, you know, they'll let you know. That's the emails that I received from George, I did want to have that answer for you. The $8 million INI, I don't know, do we need to discuss that really anymore? We are, we're under significant pressure from the state and federal environmental quality, consent orders, and we've been threatened, we may have to build a $21 million plant upgrade, and we have reason to believe, and our engineers have reason to believe, based upon what we're planning to do for the INI abatement, we have reason to believe that DEQ is going to find that satisfactory. Not only does the abatement help us to solve the problem as far as inflow, but it's helping us as it relates to the amount of sewage we have to treat, because we're treating a lot of storm water right now. So there's a savings from an operational perspective to go this route versus just a basin or whatever, a bypass basin, which would, which may be a fix, I think that was in the neighborhood of 12 million, but that, you know, we still would have to treat the storm water. In 2017, just to give you an idea, 2017, we had three bypasses for 2.1 million, 2.1 million gallons. In 2018, we had 12 bypasses for 35 million gallons, and that's bypasses straight into the river. 2019, we had four, and in 2020, I think it was last weekend, or weekend before last, we had a bypass, 2.1 million. We notified the proper authorities, but this is a problem, it's just, it is. The next item, any questions on that? Next item is a 4.8 million to be invested in the secondary road paving plan. All I've heard, I've heard the mayor's guidance, when I was interim mayor, I heard from various individuals that, you know, paving, you know, putting an aggressive paving plan was a deep goal for council. We've been doing a lot of slurry seal, and you can ask two gentlemen at the end of the table their opinions of slurry seal. We haven't done any significant paving since, in the last 15 years, it's been very modest at best. This plan, and Robbie, you might be able to help me with that, I think from my recollection is correct, the plan that we put together will take us out to 2027 on our goals list. Is that right?
Yep, for secondary.
Secondary roads, so for the next, for seven years, for the roads that we've identified, and our plan for seven years, we've been able to do it all in one shot, which also I've been advised that we would get a much better price from a contractor, because we can bring in a larger operation and get a better price than some of the smaller ones that we've been getting.
Well, Matt, on that one, the 4.8 billion, is that over, what tenure time?
That'd be until 2027.
Through 2027?
Secondary, the secondary, not primary, but secondary roads, would take us through 2027.
I understand that. So you are going to consider borrowing any $3 million to do it quicker than 2027?
No, sir, let me make sure that's, I probably didn't state that properly. We're going to borrow the money to start this fiscal year, and we hope that, all of it, all, as much as we can, as much as we can get done in a year or 18 months, but it's going to take care of our, it's going to take care of our needs, which we've identified in our, in our secondary road plan, our needs for seven years.
I understand that part.
Yeah, yeah. Explain that, right? Yep. Okay, 2.8 million, of course, if you're out there, if you're doing an aggressive paving plan, we have, we all know there's water lines that need to be replaced in the, in those secondary roads, we've estimated that to be $2.8 million. The fleet management building, that's the, that's been discussed in the past, I've done, I have done an extensive valuation of the building with various folks, that building is in need of significant rehab, and building just outdated in our capacity. We're saving a lot of money by having this done in-house, I've been really impressed with the numbers that I've seen. Outsourcing mechanics in this item would actually cost us more than the personnel we have, so I have this in the budget as well. If you decide to accept all these major capital investments, it'd be a $29 million investment plan, we would suggest, you know, we have more money than we could take, but we've had 2.8 million taken out of the water sewer fund balance, so debt financing would be approximately 26.4 million. I'll caveat a couple things, it's possible that the INI abatement, it's possible that we can get anywhere from 0 to 1 and 3/4?
That's what he was saying, yes, correct.
1 and 3/4 percent. I believe in our calculations for the proposed budget... I believe in our calculations for the proposed budget, we kept all this debt at 2.
Like 2, 2 and 1/2?
I think it's 2 and 1/2 percent. So we're trying to overestimate the rate, but we think we can get that 8 million at 0 percent, which would be a significant savings.
Would that also include the 2.8 as part of the abatement process, secondary water lines?
No.
I don't think the water, how about the redundant water?
The redundant water line, we are seeking. I haven't heard of any programs available on that just yet, but I am going to a conference here in about a month, but hopefully there'll be some options. But the INI abatement, they feel pretty confident that we wouldn't qualify for that. But we'll certainly try for the redundant water.
We're trying to get a 2 percent?
We're trying to get, we're trying to get 0.
Zero.
Worst-case scenario, 2 and 1/2.
Well, we're trying to get 2 and 1/2, and we think we can get it probably anywhere from 2 to 2 and 1/2. Rates are really good right now. And that's why it's an aggressive investment program for sure. But the rates are so good that I think now's the time to seriously consider it. And this is, you know, the basic direction I received from council, so that's why I put that in. Okay, now for the.
What does that tell us about our debt ratio, income to debt?
Yeah, solid. Auditor wasn't concerned at all. We sat down and spoke to him.
What's the number?
I can get you that.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but yes, we can get it. It's in our CAFR. I'll certainly provide that to you.
I'm going to ask that we get that number?
Yes, sir, yep. Okay, so as I, as I was preparing this, the budget, as I saw, we had three basic options. If you want to move forward with the major capital projects and investments in the town's aging infrastructure, I determined there are three options. One was a reduction of operational cost, which is rightsizing town government operations through reorganization and strategic reduction of force, reduction in five full-time equivalents and four part-time, which would equate to $573,000 reduction in personnel expenditures, all in the general fund. So like I said, as I said, there's, I mentioned three basic options. One was reduction in operational costs, or increase revenues, or do nothing. And I chose, I chose to do the reduction in operational costs. Option two, increase in revenues. So again, the underlying principle is that you want to go through the investment in capital projects. If you want to increase revenues and keep operational expenses similar to FY '20, if that's your desire, I would suggest a tax increase burden be spread across three sectors. Property owners, which would be equivalent to a real estate tax increase. Renters would be equivalent to personal property tax. And business owners, which is a business license tax. So for an example, to recruit just the $573,000, if you kept to that general model, real estate taxes would have to increase 2 cents or 15 percent. Personal property would have to increase 15 cents or 23 percent. Or business license tax would have to increase 25 percent to generate that approximately $175,000. And what I did, just to help you, just so you have an idea, seeing the right-hand side, what 1 cent of real estate tax equates to with 1 cent of personal property and what 1 percent increase in BEPole represents.
Well, Matt, would you tell the audience how much that would be? 1 percent, how much that would increase?
Oh, sure. Yeah, 1 percent in real estate is $129,000. 1 percent in personal property, I'm sorry, 1 cent. 1 cent in personal property is $9,342. And 1 percent increase in BEPole is $7,621.
So in the capital investments, 12 million, we have to move forward with redundant water line. It's too much a risk there. The INI, the low end is 8 million, really. 21 million is what we're, could be obligated to if the INI abatement plan doesn't meet the standards that are being required of us right now, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Robbie, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
For the EU basin?
So, I mean, I think that's an important note because we're attempting to avoid the $20 million. But that's a possibility for us that's still looming out there in our capital investment.
Even if we did the $21 million, there's a good, I mean, we would most likely have to still do the 8 million regardless. So the, so the 8 million will hopefully save us in the long run. Mr. Seelock, our debt ratio is 3.01. You can find it on page 126 of our 2019 CAFR.
Say that again, 3.1?
3.01.
Going back to this INI, isn't it true that DEQ, we could be facing some significant fines for them, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I didn't include fines.
And they can come back and say, no more sewer taps in our jurisdiction until we get a handle on this thing.
Sure.
And I think that's important to let people know.
Which is commercial, industrial, or residential?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Aren't we being threatened right now with the possibility of building a basin at $12 million?
I wouldn't say we're being threatened.
But it's been discussed.
That has absolutely been discussed. Matter of fact, former town manager Joe Walts and I had significant discussions about that. And he felt that DEQ was going to require us to do that. And that's when we started having discussions about doing an aggressive INI abatement, which would actually fix the problem as opposed to just a holding tank. And, you know, he loved that other option. He left before we had time to really dig into it. I've been working with the engineers, been working with Public Works. And we're, you know, we're, again, this $8 million is an estimate because we haven't had it really engineered. But I think it's a pretty solid number based upon the basins that we've already been working in, in camera and manhole fixing and whatnot. I feel that's a fairly solid number to significantly reduce our INI problem.
I was a little confused, too, on the recent bypass of 2.1 million gallons. Was that due to rain?
That was rain the weekend before last. Yeah, trust me, it was Sunday. Well, I sent you that, right. Sunday, we got, we got hit. Yeah, I don't know.
Which was the equivalent of 3 in 2017, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so 1.
Yeah, exactly.
We just start February.
Yeah.
Matt, just one more comment. The reason why I was mentioning the liability of potentially 21 million is because you talk about potential tax increases to cover 573,000, but I think that there's a higher liability than that. And last fiscal year, Joe came to us asking us to raise taxes. I think he wanted a cent tax raise. And I think it, because of the multiple issues that we were facing and filling up against the wall, this council decided to hold fast because we got a lift with property taxes. But I've been saying since 2015 that our expense, our operating expense is growing far, far faster, faster than we can catch up revenue-wise. And I think that it started to hit last year. Everybody was on council at that time, when again, Joe was pushing for a tax increase. And the only reason we dodged it, one, because council said no tax increase, but two, because there was a property tax lift in the equalization. So I just think that's an important note here as we're looking at, would we increase taxes again? And I think that, I really do think that the increasing taxes again is a combination of the do-nothing and the increased taxes because you're still going to have to deal with this next year. It's still going to come up next year for another tax increase.
That's my assessment.
Well, you said that's your assessment, but that was actually Joe's assessment last year to this council. So he was warning us that this was happening. And I think that's an important note because we're now essentially just kicked it one more year, and now we're being faced to address it.
If there's any silver lining in that, rates have dropped. And I think we can get really good rates if you decide to do these investments. Okay, so any questions on option two? I think we've talked through that. I think the third option is to do nothing. You know, you can keep the operational expenses generally where they are, do nothing, not do a lot of the capital investments, kick the can down the road on some of the major projects and/or some combination of one and two. Bottom line is, is that we're going to need to determine which option you choose so staff can prepare the budget and set the tax rates very soon. And we're going to need to get general consensus as to which option you prefer.
Are you asking that now?
No, no.
No, work session for February 18th. We'll have to discuss what we want to do on the tax rate. And at that point, we'll have to start the advertising.
Are you going to cover, I might be jumping ahead here, but are you going to cover? So if you're looking at operational expenses year over year, we add, you know, the roughly 30 million in capital depreciation. Our operating expense is going to look like, you know, it's still stayed relatively flat. But operating depreciation drops off year over year. It's going to get less over time, not more over time. Is that going to be covered in our projections?
The depreciation?
Yeah. It's not going to increase itself, that's my point.
No, depreciation will generally increases our fund balances and our reserves is where that comes into play. It's not something we budget for.
It's not going, your operational expenses?
I'm sorry?
Your operating expenses? The depreciation doesn't?
It's not budgeted in the operational expenses.
Okay, so that will show a decrease in this. And the next one, your operational expense trend then?
The.
If we're removing 500 and some thousand dollars.
But you're also capitalizing on amortization from what we're paying off that.
Okay, that's, I think we're saying the same thing then.
Yeah. That's the component, yes. So your fund balance is actually going to increase as you're paying that asset off. So the amount we're depreciating is less than the amount that we're paying towards.
Right, so we're saying the same thing. My point is, is that is not, you're replacing it with an expense that's not going to continue to grow over time.
That's correct.
That's what my point is.
Yes, sorry.
So if people are looking for operational expenses to drop significantly rounding the capital investment, the difference being though, is that those costs and part of the depreciation or amortization is not going to inflate over time, whereas the other operational expenses would have.
That's correct, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so now, I'd like to hand you terms of this document. Okay, and if you want, if you'd like to follow along with the graphs, you can flip through and have the graphs beside you. First, first page, if you go to page four in the packet, you'll see the letter that the town manager's put in. I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. You can read the letter more thoroughly. The proposed FY '20, '21 budget is $48.6 million, which is a $1 million, over, just over $1 million increase, or 2.2 percent increase from last year's budget. I've already hit on, I've hit on population, consumer price. I've hit on these items. Page five, if you're following along with me. So below are some of the rightsizing initiatives that I initiated. Privatizing, and we'll discuss more of this in the line items so you can see, but as a summary, privatizing tourism, reorganizing planning and zoning department to community development and planning, outsourcing engineering services, new position of an assistant town manager in full-time clerk of council to part-time clerk of council. So I think we've all been made, you all know the decisions that were made last week. And I think, I don't know if I've talked to you individually in this way, give your perspective. There was absolutely nothing easy and pleasurable about having those conversations with those staff members. I had a decision to make, and I consulted with legal counsel as far as, and HR, as far as the best way to handle this decision. And as I've shared before, three options. Option one was I could come to tonight's meeting and present this budget, and the effective staff that would be part of the reorganization or restructuring would see it for the first time. And then they would have to continue their work until June 30th, at which time it was implemented. I didn't think that was, I didn't think so. And legal counsel, and by the way, legal counsel, I want to put this on Doug, he was an HR specialist, legal counsel. It was not our in-house attorney. The second option is to have a conversation prior to the individuals, prior to this meeting, and have a one-on-one conversation and let them know what I was planning to propose. And in which case, you keep them on and you say, look, you know, same situation. You have, you have an employee that's going to be in-house working for you until a decision is made, up or down. I was advised, and I think it was the best option, and frankly, you know, I use the term compassionate option, and I, you know, it's the best option to have a conversation with these individuals. Meet with them one-on-one, explain that we're going through some reorganization, rightsizing, and to offer them, offer them the terms that we offered them. We should know more tomorrow. And again, I also let them all know that if council chose not to proceed with my recommendations, that they could reapply or come back to their job because council wanted to have their department open. So that was relayed. And I have, you know, that was the advice of HR council to handle it such a way. So that is part. So I have proceeded, the budget that's presented does show these rightsizing initiatives which have been implemented.
Oh, man.
Yes, sir.
Going back to your privatizing tourism, I think that's a very terrible mistake. The reason for that, we've done that in the past. And we had it into with the Chamber of Commerce. We had problems involved during that period of time. And I just don't think that's a very good idea to take tourism. The thing to say that is, I want to know where our money's being spent. And I don't want to, I'm going to know is to make sure that our town budget reflects that through whoever that's in charge of tourism. And I don't want to see it put out to a private individual where we can't keep a final control on the money and the board job.
I'm going to get to the actual department, just to let you guys know. So I'm going to walk through the following pages. So when we get to that department, we can have a more in-depth discussion then, so I can say you can see the numbers and what the impacts are.
It's still a work session, though, we can discuss it a little bit, right?
Yeah.
So why would you say that now, but not say anything about it when this was discussed a while ago?
We were in a executive session, and that's when it was first brought up, and Mr. TV brought it to us with the employees as well as the tourism privatization. And I didn't say anything. You've got to remember, I'm not part of this council. I'm the mayor. I have no vote, but I am giving you my ideas tonight, and you'll either accept it or you don't have to.
No, I appreciate that. I just wanted to get clear that you didn't say anything with this first.
Well, I didn't figure it was the time. We hadn't just discussed the budget at that time. And I think it's time to bring it out at this point. Like I said, we've done it in the past, and we've had problems at that time. That's why we chose to take it back over again, have our own person to run the tourism.
Gene, you knew about it before that meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't say, I didn't.
If you want to come in front of these people and act like you didn't know anything, it's a surprise.
Stop it, stop it, stop it! Shame on all of you.
Go ahead and continue, and we'll keep talking about it, and we'll decide on whatever you all wanted it.
No, I just think it's important to note that when this council had an opportunity to discuss it and work through it without.
We didn't, we didn't.
Yes, we did, yeah. This whole entire council did. And we did talk about it, the implications of it, the impact of it. You didn't say one word about it then. But when you have a room full of people.
You all may have talked about it.
Then you decide to come out and say, oh, this is a decision that I didn't realize was happening, and that's not true. And it's okay that you have a different opinion, I'm totally fine with that. I just want to make sure that it's known that this wasn't the first time you heard it, and now you're coming out on a side that you never expressed prior to it when you had an opportunity to put out your opinion on that. And I just want to make that clear to everybody.
That's fine. The only thing I'm saying is that last Monday night was the first time I heard about it, and you all believe it or not. We didn't discuss it on this meeting. But again, we need to make these decisions, I need. But I'm telling you, we've done it in the past, and it does not work because we're not going to get our money's worth out of privatizing. not going to get our money's worth out of privatizing our tourism. Again, that's your choice, not mine. I'm just telling you, the people in this building, that well, I feel, and I have that right to say that.
You do? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Salaries, benefits...
Mr. Pedrick, are you going to express more data as we move along in these points?
Yes, sir.
If I wanna know if we're gonna give $300,000...
Yes, sir.
You're gonna explain all that, and what's gonna be our safeguards, and what's our input?
Yes, sir, I'll show you the financials here, the proposed budget. Again, I'm just hitting the highlights right now, you can read this. Salaries and benefits, we're proposing a 2% merit raise, no COLA, third and last phase of the comp study, 3% increase in medical insurance of about $80,000. Taxes, I am proposing a one-half, one-half set tax reduction to the tune of $64,000. And I'm proposing...
This answer is ridiculous.
Mr. Mayor, I think you made, you made some comments earlier.
And I'd like to appreciate you all focusing on that.
A tax reduction of $64,000. I propose that, Mr. Mayor, to, I think it's, I think we needed to make a statement as it relates to the EDA lawsuit and the situation, that not only are our finances strong, but that we can increase, decrease our taxes if we went through proper reorganization of our, of our operating expenses. So it came to a $64,000 reduction, if, and that is factored in here again, you can choose not to do that.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Town manager. BJ, do you know off the top of your head, sorry to quiz you, what is the total dollars for the third phase of the compensation study that we're implementing? We can keep moving forward if you don't have it, but...
I have it here. Third phase total for this budget cycle is $139,700.
All right, so 100, I'm sorry, say it one more time?
$139,700.
So, and that's the, that is the, essentially the equalization after our consultants came in and said, we have positions that we need to get more in line with the market in total compensation, and this council a few years ago agreed to and has fully implemented over the period of three years, the total funding of those positions, unrelated to merit increases.
That's correct. The electric fund, we're proposing no, no increase in electric fund, and we are deferring the AMI as well, the automated metering infrastructure. Water and sewer, as we know, we have STANTEC out doing an assessment, and it is very preliminary. They, they don't have enough, enough data just yet, they're still refining their model. They were suggesting a 2% increase in the water and sewer rate.
No, they were, they were preliminary, they were suggesting a 4%.
Oh, I'm thinking, you're right.
We've included 2% conservative in the budget.
Yeah, there you go, sorry. Yeah, they were proposing a 4%, we put a 2% in the budget. Solid waste fund, no increase. Personnel, we've discussed, five full-time, a reduction of four part-time. I've discussed the major capital investments already. Total current debt, we've discussed most of that. Okay.
When do we get our actuals for the health insurance premium increase?
Ms. Jewell?
I'm sorry to hear your question.
Actuals for health insurance increase, who might we get that?
Actually, I emailed today, and I just checked my email while I was sitting here. I've not received a response. It should be this week.
Do you remember what last year's increase was? Ballpark?
Was it eight? Eight percent?
It was higher than that.
Thirteen?
Fifteen.
Yeah, I was thinking 14 or 15. So is 14 or 15% somewhere in the ballpark of a couple hundred thousand dollars if we didn't make any changes to it? What's gonna happen if that's higher than 3%? Then that's something else, we have to come back and figure out.
We'll be circling back around.
Okay.
That's a legitimate concern.
Because I don't remember the last time it's been 3%. I mean...
Yeah. I mean, we, that's a good, good point.
Okay, sure.
So we have no indicators at this time?
No, sir.
So, and that's the, one of the sec, I think it's the second largest expense, increased expense in the general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Second salary.
Sorry, I just think that that's an important note, because it's never come in at 3%. It's been in double digits, and that could be the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars. And if there's no changes in the budget, then again, that's back to a tax increase, all things being equal.
Okay, the next few pages are just some highlights. I think we've covered much, most of that in my, in my letter, you can read those more thoroughly unless you wanna use time to go through that now. Page 11, again, you don't need to necessarily go through this line by line, but you see an idea of the general fund revenue estimates.
And these, the revenues that are included in the general fund here are the exact same, well, almost the exact as seen in my revenue forecast, and a few of them have changed, but the majority, most of the revenues are the same as the forecast that I presented.
So that was presented just...
Last work, two work sessions ago.
Two work sessions, or one work session.
It was, it would've been a...
Were you, you were at that, yeah, that's right, went through all that very detail. Page 12, street fund, special projects, electric fund, which they're, you know, pretty flat.
On the revenues for the special fund, in this proposed budget, we did take the revenue that we normally set around, or set aside for the EDA debt service, and if that's been moved over to the attorney expense, you'll see that as we go through here, if you happen to notice that the revenue was not there. It's been transferred over to the general fund, and I can say that it's used for attorney services at this time.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, if, and I'm open to how you wanna go through this. Now we're gonna go through each department, if you wanted to get the, this document and follow along by graph, and you might find that, find that easier.
The, the only thing, I don't wanna see us go through the actual operational budget, because that's pretty much customary. If you've got anything that you wanna add to as far as council outlays or whatever it is, I'd like to hear.
Yeah, so we have highlighted in these departments, we've highlighted some significant capital outlays, so I'll thumb through that quickly, and also your doc, your, your proposed budget will show the actual cells that are highlighted, so you'll be able to see very easily which, you know, make significant items are identified. Clerk of council, this is the first significant area of reorganization. So you see in the 2020, 2020 adopted budget, salaries and wages were, including benefits and insurance, were $84,000. I have, I have proposed a $10,700 for clerk and a deputy clerk, which is considered to be part-time. You'll notice on your graph, for clerk of council, you'll see that back in, you know, 2014, the position was part-time, and then throughout the last few years, and it's my understanding that council wasn't certain exactly how or when that took place, but became a full-time position in 2020. So the significant savings, approximately $74,000 in that one position, and again, this would be, my recommendation at the appropriate time would be to appoint a part-time clerk and a part-time deputy clerk, which is the way, the way it was in years past.
So is that why there's the significant, like in 2014, $34,000 to 2020, $80,000, I mean, that's a difference of $50,000?
Full-time from part-time to full-time.
From part-time to full-time.
It went part-time, or part-time to part-time with benefits, to part-time with benefits, to full-time, full-time benefits to raise, and then that's why it went from $35,000 to $85,000.
I just, I just carry those.
Town manager, the most significant item here is the, is my recommend, recommended addition of an assistant town manager. I, and I've been very open about this, I think from a succession planning perspective, our government is not serving the people well, for me even to, you know, have to outsource an interim manager when a, when a manager leaves for some reason or another. I think for succession planning, I think it's essential to have an assistant town manager. The assistant town manager can take on, currently, I have 12 apartment heads that I have to oversee and evaluate, I think having an assistant can take on much of the general fund operations, and allow the town manager to really dig in into the enterprise funds, and frankly, it's just not enough, you know, not enough time, but, you know, that's, that is an addition. And, you know, I, through the reorganization, restructuring, not only was there recommended reduction of force, but I did recommend adding an item to the line item, and again, this is council's decision. So...
I think it's much needed, Mr. Pedrick, I spoke about that back before Joe left, and not being called again. We were kinda called in a bad way with Joe left, and I just, I think it's good to have an assistant, it's a, it's a mountainous amount of work to go through, and I just think it, it makes sense, makes sense totally.
I wanna point out on this one that I know you say it's a bit of an ad, it really isn't, in as much as Joe had mentioned in 2016, 27, I think it was 2016, 2017, that he needed an assistant town manager, and council was supportive of that. And the difference is, is he opted to bring on an engineering position, and Gene, you can validate this, but he brought on the engineering position with the idea that over time, it would be morphed into the assistant town manager position. So this council's been very supportive of an assistant town manager position, how that kinda played out, we've kinda left to the town manager to decide, you know, what's the best way to have succession planning. I don't think it quite played out the, the way that Joe intended, but I do wanna reiterate this, that this council fully voted to support the new ad of that position years ago, to try to build in some succession planning for the town manager position.
And, and, you know, depends how, how it's done, there's various ways of going in, identifying folks from within the organization, which case the, the money, the cost for that, that position wouldn't be as exorbitant in the budget, so you just kinda promote from within until you get to that lowest tier, which case you're bringing someone in at a much lower rate than you would of, you know, a true assistant town manager to a certain price tag. So there is some advantages to that.
On page four, I'm just curious, the big jump in this chart?
Which? Town manager?
This one.
To the jump?
Yeah.
That you see there for the personnel benefits, that was, in 2019, we had the engineer position was budgeted under the town manager's department, we only budgeted for a portion of the year, and then in 2020, we had the engineer under its own department, and this for year 21 is the assistant town manager position, so it's going back.
So the 2016, where it went from...
The operating. Oh, the operating, the operating expense, okay, I apologize, the, on the operating expense side, that was due to a, in, an inventory item in the general fund, if I remember correctly.
$144,000 in office supplies?
Yes.
So it's on page 20, you'll see, Lauren.
Okay.
And I don't know what that, we could find out exactly what that was, but there was something that was billed through the town manager's office for a major town supply.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, $144,000. Town engineer, again, this, this position was also reorganized, and I'm proposing to allocate $50,000 for outsourced services. Most of, as you know, most of our projects are contracted projects anyway, these would be more in-house projects, then we may need some engineering work. I've talked to several individuals about that, they think the $50,000 number is a, is a good budget number. And the one individual I talked to, without even telling me what the number was, he said, well, you know, you're probably looking at as low as 40,000, maybe as much as 60. And I said, funny you said that, I picked 50. So I think, I think that's a solid number. Again, that office was costing us about $120,000, and I think through outsourcing it, we can get it down to about 50. Mr. Mayor, here's an example, I think, of the first highlight that you'll see in HR on page, page 22, you see under professional services, a $42,000, that was for the insurance consultant annual, annual price tag. Fleet management on page, page 24, the, some capital expenditures.
Sorry.
Sure.
Please. So yes, we hired a consultant to, to enable our health insurance plan to offer us sustainable options, so it doesn't keep going up in double digits, so that we have basically a five-year plan of how to pay for our benefits and have a little bit more of a lot of control over, over that.
So that was that line item?
That's correct.
So in this line item, you'll see some capital investments, $16,000 down at the bottom, you can see that it's for parts cleaner and automobile scanner, as well as the $111,000 in debt financing for the new building. So that's how we indicate, that's how we showed it throughout the budget, so it's very easy for you to track and follow. Any questions? Information technology, again, we have some highlights. Big thing is cybersecurity, Shentel dark fiber networking drops, as well as some other recording services, Rapid Recovery Server, and we do have budgeted replacing 30 computers. And you should, you should know that in most of these cases, staff suggested maybe a larger number than 30, I think, I think our turnover rate for computers may be a little too soon, I think we can maybe stretch it out a little, over six months, I feel comfortable with the 30 computers in, in the organization. Also, you should note that where you see an increase in electric department as an example, or increase here, expenses related to Shentel or whatnot, we get reimbursed for...
Not necessarily this one.
Much if not all. I think this item's ours, right?
Yeah, this item is ours, but there are some coming up, as you've heard.
That's for the school system.
Is that for the school?
That's for the police radio system, correct?
Police radio system, water treatment plant.
Okay, tourism. So you'll see in the FY 20 budget, that personnel expenses alone were $234,000, which left approximately $175,000 to be spent towards tourism, or tourism-related activities and other, other related expenses. As I've, as I've mentioned, I'm proposing to take $225,000 and outsource that to an organization that has experience in tourism-related activities. Allocating $46,000 to the blighted building, blighted building projects, I think improving our, our appearance, in my, my opinion, is a tourist-related activity as it is, as much as it is anything else. Also, I believe, Ms. Thompson, you asked for downtown events, the, I, we were able to get that included in the budget, and we, and we upped the bus, bus system. So you see down at the bottom that we have an increase in the bus routes for one hour on Mondays through Friday, and starting at 11:00 versus 1:00 on Saturdays, so you see that's an approximate $8,000 just by changing those hours, and the normal operation, assuming the price remains pretty consistent as it was this year, $39,000. So total in the tourism budget, again, money that's going more directly to tourism, $332,000 versus $175,000 in this year's budget. versus 175,000 in this year's budget, if you back out the salaries and wages. I believe we can accomplish our mission, and frankly, I wouldn't have recommended it if I didn't think we could even excel and accelerate the tourist activity utilizing this plan as opposed to what we've done in years past. Yes, ma'am.
Is the idea to use the chamber for this function initially?
That's, that's going to be a council decision. I think there's some discussion, there should be some discussion about that. It would be worthwhile to have that discussion. Of course, all that will be done in work sessions and.
Yeah, because I had some horror stories over the weekend about when it was there before. And that's one of those things where you're like, Gene, it was brought up to you before, like, yeah, it was brought up to you before, but that's why we also vote twice, because in between votes, you can learn something new.
Absolutely.
So I, I heard a lot of horror stories about that, so better not go that route.
Good. I, you know, I too, I think if it decides to go to a local organization, in my opinion, or my suggestion, if we have a really strong MOU, I would frankly advise a one-year contract. I wouldn't advise a long-term contract. I would also advise perhaps a board to be established with various citizens and representatives from town council. So I think, I'm hoping in MOU, whether it's, whether it is through a local organization, whether that be Chamber or any other local organization, or if we outsource it to, frankly, I was preparing this budget today, and an individual that is, that specialized, a corporation that specializes in tourist-related activities came and asked me what was in the budget as it relates to outsourcing tourism. And the comments that I was receiving were very positive as far as other jurisdictions that have done this, according to this individual. So again, that's what I've proposed, and it's going to be left up to council to decide how we want to move forward. Town attorney, we have approximately 215,000 that we've set aside for legal fees as it relates to EDA. Whether that's 100,000 or whether that's 300,000, I don't, I think we all, council and staff felt that that was a reasonable number to put in. 200,000 of it was attorney fees, 15,000 was the other professional services. Finance, frankly, just a very lean operation. No significant investments in personnel or in capital or equipment. Again, you slow me down if you want, I'm just rolling through this. Page 34. Let's see. Police admin. We have a modest increase in police admin. Had a lot of good discussions with the chief and his staff. We really rolled our sleeves up, and I think we have a very solid budget. Police patrol, we have machinery, equipment of 35,000, and communications equipment of 71. I don't even know where you want to begin on this. Body cameras for vehicles and personnel is a major expenditure, and it's one that's becoming more of a must-have than a, than a should-have. What we're probably proposing in this budget is a lease of the equipment as opposed to a purchase, primarily because the equipment's becoming outdated so quickly, that the bases are obsolete, or not obsolete, but you have to get new cameras, you have to get a new base, and you're going to end up with probably three or four different types of systems. That's why we felt like recycling or leasing these body cameras every three to five years? Five years.
Five years.
Five years is the option. The company that is very strong in this industry is Motorola. Motorola is doing some very significant acquisitions of various companies, two of which are companies that we currently use. So, you know, ultimately, it'd probably be a Motorola, Motorola communication equipment is what we're using now.
Another thing I'd like to add is on the top there, you'll see staffing in Northwest Community Services. That is the funding that we will receive the revenue back from Northwest to pay for that, to pay for the, where the officers go there and help staff the facility.
Have we validated if that's a budget-neutral proposal for us, or if it's costing us more to do that?
I have not validated. Chief, I think he's done some figures. He's done some figures on the Northwest, and it's beneficial from a budgetary standpoint.
The drug task force?
No, the Northwest.
Northwestern, oh, yes. So far, especially the first, first couple of months, we saved a significant amount of time keeping officers on the streets rather than having to send them to Petersburg, Roanoke, Williamsburg with the transports. And they've just now, this, the end of this past month, have rolled out alternate transportation, which will further decrease, because what they've essentially done is obtained some grant money to privatize some of that transportation of folks in crisis to those mental health facilities. So it's, they're doing, they're doing pretty great things, and we've gotten in on the ground floor, fortunately for us. The other item, if you look at motor vehicles, you got the bottom of the page, you'll see that there was a request for four additional officers and four, and two additional patrol units, and then replacing two additional cars, replacing one patrol truck. It's valuable to have fleet management working with me. And I think we had sat down and talked with the captain and the chief, and I believe we all agreed that we could, we don't need to purchase these vehicles this year, probably something in, I'd say, this fiscal year. In the following fiscal year, you may end up having to replace a couple. But I think it fell through, fell into the budget cycle, if you look at it, for, what year was that, '19, you really didn't have to buy any vehicles in '19 either. So just, we just happened to catch one of those cycles. Investigations, nothing significant. Police services, no significant changes in police services. Task force, motor vehicle. That's a used motor vehicle. Department of Plan and Zoning. You see that the 40,000, it's been requested for the property maintenance is carried over again this year. Again, this was one rightsizing position which saved us, what happened? One rightsizing position in the department saved us about 58,000. You can see in fiscal year '21. So that carried down to the bottom line, saved us, you know, about 75,000 from last year's budget, based upon other cuts.
So I can ask one question?
Please.
I'm going to take you back a few. On the dispatch evidence, tech crossing guards from police services, from 2014 to the 2021 budget, it's gone from 375 to 819, an increase there. Are we getting closer to the amount of staff that we need in that department, or is this going to be something that's a continual trend? I know we added crossing guards, I remember that at a certain point in time, but what's pushing that, that cost up?
There has been a couple of positions in that department over the years. And I believe also some of the figures going that up is the compensation study. If you look, the compensation study is roughly 30,000 for the last two years. So, I mean, that's a 60,000 in the last two years from the compensation study.
Yeah, but I mean, look at a six-year trend, and, you know, you're pretty close to double. You are double.
Yeah. You're correct, there was a couple of positions.
Chief, do you have any thoughts on the future?
You can follow up with me later, that's fine. I don't want to drag it down on that one. And I'm aware, I mean, the majority of the compensation study affects the PD, right?
You're correct.
Yes, you're correct.
I'm going to go to the electric department. And again, I'm happy to stop along the way. The general guidance, I've got to sit.
Just real quick on the special funds, you'll see that the zero is being budgeted for the debt service.
What page is that?
That will be on page 47, under, that's service economic development. You'll see the last year, fiscal year '20, we budgeted 141,400. Fiscal year '21, there's been nothing budgeted. Also down under the community development, so you'll see that for the police department facility, you'll see the 515,500 that we've allocated for the debt service there, and our lead running parkway money paid to Warren County, then that debt service went in 2035. Local connector road, it's 5,000 there for a letter of credit that we have to carry on the road until.
So we're, are you saying that we're continuing to fund the debt service on the facility? 515,000?
That's, yes, that's what we had budgeted last year, and it should, I feel that it's adequate to cover the debt service payment.
Okay.
If we can finance that.
Electric department, page 50. No significant changes in personnel or in operations. We do have the fiber network. You get down to the bottom, you'll see that the fiber network's 33,000. And there's a description on page 51 of what the items are for. So if you go to 51, you'll see about 30,000 between a water trailer and SCADA, 22, about 23,000 bucket truck, 75,000 for emergency generator. That building was built a few years ago, and they didn't build an emergency generator for the electric department. So got to have an emergency generator, I think. 53,000 to pave the parking lot, that's been discussed in the past. And then transformer replacement, year three of six, of 142,000, fiber network from Chintel 33. What was requested, we thought it was important to show this to you, and I did not include that, include these items in the proposed budget. 43,000 for a new traffic signal on 14th and Shenandoah. 132,000 for North Shenandoah streetlights, and 35,000 to replace the electric vehicle charger down at Village Commons.
I know you did, you got, did put that in on that electrical vehicle charger. That was put in, I thought that Nissan was going to continue to replace that as needed during that installation.
Yeah. David's here, I think.
Yeah. They, what they had, they had their service agreement was for five years, and so at that time, it was outdated, because this stuff is all computerized. So as of right now, it's on a free boot.
Well, is it, is it workable, or is it something that?
Well, as of right now, you can charge your vehicle there for free, because all their hardware, they came and removed it, because the agreement was over. So it was a 35,000 cost for them to continue to do that. Now, I'm looking into some other things, into some grants and that type of thing, and the pricing has come down also. Now, that, the one that's down there is a fast charger. We can get what's called a slow charger for, you know, a whole lot less money. But, you know, that comes with some pain too.
So, the reason I'm asking then, are we, are we bound to replace that as a?
No, we have, we're, we're no obligation of anybody right now.
And David, from perspective, you say it's on free, but right, how much are we talking about, as far as usage?
Oh, this time of year, we've had just a few charges in the last couple of months. In the summertime, it averages about five to six charges.
Happy to put it in. You know, just 33,000, or 35,000. Yes, sir.
Two years ago, under pedestrian safety, we did a lot of work to consider what's going on Shenandoah Avenue. We've got sheets going in there this coming year. Pedestrian safety. My understanding, and I went to VDOT training on our little lights downtown or Shenandoah, real nice coming across the bridges. But in reality, they do not reflect a person crossing the street, because they're too low. I think that proposal was made to heighten some of those lights, especially around any crossing. So you get a halo effect, and you can see. I've had in numerous people approach me and say, somebody crossed in front of me, and I didn't even see him. And that's true. I've had it happen to me. I'm really concerned about that being eliminated, especially on Shenandoah with the new adding sheets.
Under our street fund, we do, one page, one page 65 and 66, you'll see on there that we do have under crosswalks, we have 10,000 budgeted under non-VDOT street funds and 30,000 budgeted under VDOT street funds. So we do have a total of 40,000 allocated just to crosswalks for fiscal year '21.
Right, but he's, I think, council, he's timed the lights.
Did we talk about those lights, or what, didn't we talk about doing something similar to the bridges?
Continuing the bridges.
That would shine down and look like.
That's what I was wondering, if that's not what it was.
Okay, I apologize.
Well, that is the proposed revenue share.
Yeah, I can't remember.
We won't know till the light. And I think paid in from 14th.
That's right.
That was, that was part of the three that were in revenue sharing that we applied for.
You're right, Bill. It was to carry those, carry those lights from the bridge all the way down through there. And I think that that was, we were going to wait to find out if we could get it through the revenue share, to be able to execute on that program, before we did anything like, you know, crosswalk-wise or whatever. I think that was the.
Yes, you are very good.
Crosswalk is not going to go away, because that's imperative. That's, that's a real concern of mine. I mean, we've had enough fatalities in this community, and I certainly don't want to hear about another one.
So is your, is your suggestion that we put the 132,000 back in the budget for Shenandoah Lights Now and not make it part of any revenue share in the future, or?
When will we hear about the revenue share?
Well, it's going to say in order to be eligible for revenue sharing, you'd have to show it in the budget.
132,000. Raise taxes or cut budget. Yeah, I mean, we can talk, I mean, that's what, that's what tonight's for, to get your guidance.
It's very concerning.
Are we with it? Would that cover the lighting through there, or was that just?
We'd have to show it upfront, and if it got approved, do a resolution, and then we would get the refund afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah, we had to spread the light.
I'd also want that for South Street, too. I mean, we just had a fatality up there, and it was a lighting issue, you can't see up there.
Yeah, we've been in discussions with VDOT.
So, yeah, we've talked to VDOT about that stuff, yeah.
Is there, is there a creative way to do that? I mean, showing that we're going to front the money?
No.
Like with the, I don't know, I'm making stuff up, like through our enterprise funds or whatever, does it have to be shown through the general fund? And if we don't get it, you know, it's removed from the budget. If we get it, then.
Look, I think, give me your guidance, right? I'm here in guidance, and let me, let me come up with options for you.
I think if there's an opportunity to do the lighting, I'm more in favor of that than a crosswalk that stops everybody on the bypass through, I mean.
We have not taken a lot out of reserve balance. Okay? So the budget that's being proposed is borrowing a lot of money for major capital investments, and we have money in reserve balance that I believe we could use for projects such as this. It's a good capital project.
I support Councilman Seelock's recommendation on that.
I do, I do.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Something else I want to note on the, on the electric department there is, you'll see a line item for the top 20,000 for salaries related to services provided to Chintel. And then there's also a line item in the middle there for 130,000 for materials for Chintel. This is a ongoing project that the electric department is doing, and they're being, actually being reimbursed through Chintel. So it's additional revenue that we'll be receiving for this. And once the project's completed, it will be budgeted.
There might be money for those lights. It's 130,000.
Well, the revenue that we're receiving is going toward their...
I thought you meant we were gonna have to put it up first.
Okay. Okay, any questions on the electric department? Later reading, nothing of significance, public works. Let's see, do we have any, not in general properties. Yeah, we have an auxiliary budget. Mr. Mayor, we need to take a, every good?
Was the Prospect Street Bridge Repair still left in this year's budget, or was that part of the...
It was taken out.
That was taken out as well.
Okay, significant, so horticulture, we have reduction in the, or the 2020 adopted budget of 226, this is in personnel, to 186. And what I've done is I've increased $20,000 for professional services in horticulture. I've talked to several individuals about possibly getting a landscape architect on retainer to work with our staff to, you know, continue to promote the indication of the Water admin, nothing significant, sewer admin, no significant change, water plant. We have 115,000 in machinery and equipment, replacing the pump and pump control valve. This year, two of three of those. We're on page 58, sorry. 59, we have professional services and machinery and tools. This is for the wastewater treatment plant. You see the chemicals on line 45, 406, you know, $800,000 in chemicals. We're hoping that if we're able to remedy or reduce INI, that that number will come down dramatically.
Did you say 800,000 or 150,000?
800,000.
800,000 line, 4, 45, 406.
And that's in the current budget right now, 800,000.
Yes, that's correct.
And we're on page, are you...
And we do, we have $55,000 budgeted to try to do a study, like Matt said, to try to get that brought down, or see what we can do better to try to reduce that.
We've allocated $55,000 for a chemical performance study. We just have to figure out a way, Rob, do you want to talk anymore about that study? Are you able, are you in a position to talk about that?
Yeah, I mean, one thing is, you check all the different, like the polymer, and different things like that, the rotary jump thickener. One of the issues we're having now is the TSS violations, where the plant's almost, it can't get the solids out, because it's getting backed up with waste. And that's the big thing now, that we gotta get straightened out with the new plant. So it's almost gonna be a review of the TSS, the chemicals, kind of a design review of the whole plant and everything.
$950,000 on the water plant and wastewater treatment plant, chemical treatments for the last two years, last year and this year's fiscal year.
Yep.
And do we have any idea of what we think that's gonna reduce if we do the seven-year plan with INI?
$137,000 is what is expected to drop down for wastewater.
Year over year?
Yeah, just one time. It could be more, it could be less, but, well, I mean, I'm sorry, it would be, it's not, so over the course of two years, you're not gonna, you're not gonna see an increase, where it's gonna go $260,000, but it'd be 137,000 steady.
Did that line move?
Yes.
Out of other operating expenses?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I was getting ready to mention that.
Okay, 'cause, all right, does that make more sense?
New chemicals, just sorry.
No, the, it was under other operating expense, as you see, it drastically increased, and created a separate line, and a better track.
All right, I wasn't sure if that was due to some new regulation or us...
It was for tracking purposes, because it's burned so much, and because we did it for the wastewater plant, we just have to go and do it for the water plant as well.
And you say our operations has nearly doubled since fiscal year 2017. Significant, not an issue. Okay, almost done. We are on water maintenance, we have $14,000 machinery and equipment, those are for the two message boards, or two message boards, right?
Only one message board.
Message board here, and then we split it with another department, sorry. And then we have the street broom, 6,500, split. And there's the street broom, and the other message board is in the sewer maintenance. Then we have, here's the debt service for the INI abatement, $550,000 is the debt service. And that is, again, that is using two and a half percent interest rate.
Correct.
If it was zero percent, of course, let's see, we did it, it'd be 400,000 at zero percent.
Yes.
There's your lights.
There you go.
That's enterprise fund.
Why do you have to ruin that? PJ, is anything in the sewer debt services you need to discuss?
There's a $100,000 in there for the debt service on the looping project that was estimated, so we have included that at this time, once we get the actual figures.
Where is that on here?
Under 9672, under the water debt service, right above the blue box, second lineup.
Yep, yep.
Aside from that, nothing, that was ordinary.
Solid waste management, scales for four trucks, where are we?
Page 64.
Yeah, solid waste management. Motor vehicle, internal transfer from water fund, 34,000. And the motor vehicle is the refuge truck, three of five payments.
One is water four, the internal end to the water fund, this will be the last year for.
Do we have another refuge truck? We're making payments on?
Just two, we only have two that we're making payments on. We had a third budgeted, but we use that one for recycling, one for recycling.
That's right, okay.
4,500 highway maintenance, on page, what is it, BJ?
66.
Page 66, we have 30,000 replacing asphalt roller, three of five year, replaced rubber tire loader, one of three year, 58,000, street sweeper, four of 10 years, 22,000, and the debt service for the secondary road paving, 533,000. And that is financed at two and a half percent, but we lowered the term to, was it 10?
10 years.
10 years versus 20. Thought it was a lot more prudent to do that.
And Mr. Goss, you'll see that not funded there is the Prospect Bridge Repair.
That's 200, and correct me if I'm wrong, the reason that wasn't funded, VDOT, VDOT didn't have it on a priority list, right?
We had it in revenue sharing, but if it doesn't get...
Yeah, so it is in revenue sharing.
Drop out.
Right.
So what about the deck on Stonewall? Y'all looked at that?
Yeah, we have, and, let's see, Stonewall? Deck on Stonewall?
Wonder about pavement.
Yeah.
We hit forward reports and stuff.
Yeah, but you could see some of the steel showing, I just wondered what your plans are.
We'll have to come up with some, whereas we're working on it, trying to get a plan together.
And I think that's it. Here's a list on page 68, list of fees. I know one fee that I really want to take out, is the $10...
Certificate of business license zoning clearance.
Business license zoning clearance, $10. That's for the thermal shelter, as an example. We had to take that to a meeting, we actually had a vote on it to waive $10 for, you know, some of these fees are just so minimal. I would encourage Council to go through those and find out which ones you think need to be modified, but...
Cost of water process.
Yeah, cost water process that it does to attract it. So, members of council, that concludes, I'll show, if you want, the organization chart. Page 69 shows our, let me do it this way, page 69 shows our reserve balances, please study those, if you're convenience.
Matt, where's the revenue associated with these fee structures?
It's, they're broken down mainly, they're mainly in the general fund, well...
We have an estimate built in there for them?
Yes, estimates are built in, they're nominal, a majority of them are nominal.
Can we just say, if you come across a few areas, or you guys give us a recommendation of fees that are more of a nuisance to us, or cost water process, I mean, I'm all in favor of any of these fees that we can get rid of and don't need.
Some of them are there for...
No, I got that, I got that.
But, yeah, I see where you're going to. Yeah, we can certainly go through them and give some recommendations.
Some of these also just make people really upset, they have to pay that.
Oh, not them, they gotta, they gotta get, fill out the permit, they gotta walk to the counter, they gotta pay it, they gotta get the receipt, they gotta come back to the department, and it's just, we gotta, I'll go through it, and with BJ and staff, and so staff, maybe you can recommend as well, and Chris, is Chris here?
I would ask, I would ask, I mean, customer service friendly as possible, anywhere that makes sense, that we don't need a $10 fee on something, let's get rid of it. I mean, if there is something there, is it, you know, it's a bit of a deterrent, so not everybody's just running in, you know, doing a zoning permit or whatever, I get it, but some of these are just a little bit, a little bit ridiculous.
$5,000 worth of fee.
Yeah, right. Org chart, on page, proposed org chart on page 72. And, you know, get a perspective, it's good data. That really concludes, and then in the back of the document, we have our current local choice health benefits, then we have our fiscal policies, which I think is a good practice to put in, and then procedures for purchasing, a procurement manual, which is on page 91. We, I am hopeful, I'm hopeful that in the next quarter, to be able to come up with a draft of a revised policy. I know that procurement officer Alyssa Scott and BJ have been working hard on trying to get our procurement policies updated. We have some really good procurement procedures in place, and they just keep getting better every year, so...
Well, and the times have changed since 2002, you have a lot of things done online, we wanna have the capability, and I have to come back to town council each time we wanna have an online auction, and you know, streamline some things. But, yeah, I might have to go talk to Alyssa, she's certainly done more work on this than I have.
Okay, that concludes my presentation. Mr. Mayor, members of council, any questions?
Thank you, Matt. Any discussions on any...
Thanks, Matt.
Any open discussion on any other issue we tonight other than the budget? Okay, next item this evening is a closed meeting. Before we go into that, does anyone want to take a five-minute recess?
Can I, can I propose, I know nobody wants to spend any longer time than we want, but I'm happy to take a 10 or 15-minute break and make sure that I can answer any questions before we come back in, and just throw it out there.
You mean for the public?
Yeah, because I know people are gonna leave in a closed session, and there seems to be a lot of people looking out. I'm happy to...
How about you ask, do y'all agree with that? Do you want to do that?
10 minutes?
Yeah.
Would like to remind everybody that the next work session, we will have to discuss what tax books you want to advertise, something like that.
Next work session.
Yeah, just advertise it.
Okay.
Do you want to ask someone, I just want to go ahead and close the session.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure it's the one with the yellow highlight.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move the town council going to a closed meeting for the following purposes. Consultation with legal counsel, briefings by staff members on consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, specifically the town's lawsuit against the Economic Development Authority, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating, negotiating or litigating posture of town council. Probable litigation, meaning litigation that has been specifically threatened, or on which town council or its legal council has a reasonable bias to believe will be commenced by or against a known party pursuant to section 2.2-3711 dot A dot 7 of the Code of Virginia. Two, to consider town's legal position and strategy with respect to potential legal issues concerning town water and sewer connections, tap fees, and related expenses under Town Code, Chapter 134, pursuant to section 2.2-3711 dot A dot 8 of the Code of Virginia. Three, discussion and consultation of assignment, appointments, promotion, performance, demotions, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711 dot A dot 1 of the Code of Virginia.
Here's that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried, we'll go into the second session.